This is the Wapaka Area School District Board of Education meeting.
Before I call the meeting to order, thank you everyone for taking time out of your schedules to join us today. I will ask Betty whether or not moving our summer schedule from 7:00 a.m. till 5:15 p.m. is better or worse.
Great.
Okay, all right. Kind of knew the answer and it's important though to answer before you ask the question.
Great.
With that-
5:14, I made it.
With that, I'm going to ask Steve if you would lead us in the flag, please.
Flag to lead us through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I will call this meeting to order. We'll share with the roll call that the record reflects all members of board are present. We'll move on to approval of the agendas or motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second to approve of the agenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move right along to public comment. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the board? Yes, sir.
My name's John Miller with the town of Dayton. I'm the chair. I wanted to speak a little bit about Fund 80, the issues that we see coming up there. And I feel there's really a disconnect in communication between the school board, the city, and the towns that are participating in the funding of the youth sports and recreational activities. There seems to be this city and school board communication going on without any of the towns participating. And at least between Dayton, Farmington, we have to represent at least, let's say, close to half the kids that are in the schools that participate in those programs. I think we have just communicated a little bit about some of the issues that we have with Sandy and going on, but I would like the board to know that we feel left in the dark. We are all in favor of funding and we have in the past for the last, I don't know how many years, let's say 10 years, at least five years that I've been on the board. But we think there should be more input. It's hard to understand why the city is coming to the school board asking for funds. And we have a hard time getting information from the city as far as the actual numbers and how our athletics, our participation dollars go. So that's what I would ask the board is to try to keep the towns in the loop, participate where we can, we can give you the information that we think is vital in this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you're aware, being in the position you are, we really are not ad lary to discuss Fund 80 per se, in that it's not on the agenda this evening. However, I do not think it's inappropriate to be able to share with you that meetings are going to be scheduled in the future for discussions. There's been no intent to keep anyone in the dark. There's been, we've been approached by the city, but there have been no discussions by the board with regard to that request. And we would fully intend to have all stakeholders involved in any discussions, so I will, beyond that, I really can't say much, but I just want to give you that assurance that there have not been discussions or negotiations as such, there's just been a request with our having asked for some data, so.
Well, an unrequited question, this has been two years in the process, I think, that Fund 80 first came out.
I don't have the dates committed to memory, but they, we were approached one time before and then more recently, yes.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, as long as it's not discussed.
Just a general response. I sit on the city park and rec board. There are members of every township on that board. We meet monthly, we've been meeting monthly for years. We have had Fund 80 updates every month, and one of your board members sits on that every time. So whatever information that has been passed out through the city and/or committees that have met or not met or updates have all been filtered through township representatives. And just to make the record straight, the town, the city did not come to the school board to ask for money or funding. Fund 80 is not about funding from the school board to the city, okay? It's about a tax that the entity that collects the tax, it's not about the school board giving money to the city, okay? It's another way of collecting tax to be used for projects for the community. So let's just be clear on that.
Very clear on Fund 80. And some of the information that I see and some of the meetings that goes on as far as your minutes of notes indicate that you're looking, the city is looking for ways that it can get Fund 80 eligible dollars to fill up this grand $350,000, which started out at $190,000 and now is up to $350,000. Enough, I think, that's.
Well, to reiterate what Steve said, we'll take up all of that discussion in the future.
In a public arena. And all townships, all stakeholders will be made aware of that meeting. Okay? All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Very good. We'll move on then to approval of minutes. We start with the May 6th, 2019 special board meeting.
I approve.
Motion to approve is our second.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, corrections, additions? They're being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The May 14th, 2019 regular board meeting, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is our second. Motion and second, any discussion, additions, corrections? They're being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And finally, the May 18th, 2019 special board meeting, is there a motion?
I approve.
Motion to approve is our second.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to communications. First item on their communications is the WASB Business Service Award and the SBO Pinnacle Achievement Award. Either of you like to-
It was, I didn't realize it was going to be an agenda, thanks Carol, but really it was about the cafe and the cafe, the creation of the cafe, the human civil diversity and creates socialization gaps that would actually bridge gaps and bring students together collectively. And it had done that, and so, and really the athletes go to the business services staff, which is Carol Conley and Linda, and so it's a collective achievement of everyone in the culture of this organization for the district.
We appreciate everyone who worked on the concept and the implementation and having been here, certainly there are many times other students coming through during their morning breaks to get a little lunch and sometimes some caffeine, which is for all of us that have children, not as fresh of the imagination that they might need that around nine o'clock in the morning, so. Our appreciation for everything everyone's done, it's nice to have that recognized. We'll move on to the district administrators' report.
Thank you, President Johnson. On Sunday, June 2nd, 2019, the school district of Wapaka realized another graduating class. 138 students walked across the stage and earned their diploma. On June 7th, 2019, the 2018-19 school year came to an end for the students in the district while staff returned to work on Monday, June 10th, to close out their school year. The end of the year get-together was filled with examples of our theme this year, which was inspire and impact. We had 18 staff members who retired this year, and although their knowledge, experience, and dedication will be sorely missed, we welcome our new hires to the Wapaka family. Some important upcoming dates to keep in mind, on June 17th, summer school begins. August 5th through the 9th is the Wapaka First Institute Week. August 13th and 14th is Tech Camp. August 20th through the 22nd is our new teacher orientation program. August 26th is the Snow Day Make-Up Professional Development Day for staff members. August 27th is the Welcome Back Breakfast, and September 3rd is the first day of school. That concludes my report.
Did you send me an email? I didn't get all those down.
It will be included in the other presentation.
I got it yesterday. It was in your letter. It came yesterday.
And it's on the website.
Thank you to everyone who was able to attend graduation as well as the closing breakfast To me, graduation is obviously always a highlight and seeing those smiling faces as they are recognized for their accomplishments, so thank you very much. We'll move on to monitoring report. Pardon? We've got to change this because the top of this is including half of my board reports. We'll start with any comments that anyone wishes to make about meetings attended and during school visits.
I don't have any comment on meetings attended in the past, but I am interested in going to the one that's coming up. I don't know if that's listed on here, I didn't see it, in July. There's one in Appleton for diversity for school board members. We've all gotten received that. I'm interested in going up to that, as long as we're talking about it, so Carol, so I don't forget, Carol, thank you.
I didn't go to, is it school visits?
Sure.
Yeah. I didn't make a school visit, but Steve and I attended the pinnacle award for the WASB for the Comic Cafe in May, and it was awesome. Most of our, a lot of the office staff was there, and it was a, it was a nice moment for Wapaka High School, so congratulations to everyone that was part of it, that takes a whole district, so it was a good moment for Wapaka.
And where was that, Betty?
It was at the KI Convention Center on a Friday morning, I don't know what date, 14th.
The date is irrelevant, but what time did you have to get up to?
5:30 a.m. And I chalked the whole way there, you know? Imagine that. It was a nice day.
Thank you. Any other meetings to report on, Sandy?
Well, I attended Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools of Works Zoom workshop on meeting community needs through charter schools. It was very interesting, it was one of the best ones I had attended, and I signed up for every authorizer workshop now that they're going to offer, except for a couple that are so far away that I won't go in person, but if you are interested in, there's one that's going to be, I think in Madison toward the end of July, maybe July 27th, that I'm planning to go down to, it'd be like 9:00 to 3:00, there are two sessions. So if someone else is interested in doing that, and also, I just think these Zoom courses are so valuable that if you're interested in, as part of the calendar, I can send you a link to all of those and a list of all the authorizer courses. It's possible to get together and watch them on the same screen, it's interactive, and this most recent one had two WASB presenters, Barry Forbes and then, oh gosh, all right, Barry Forbes and Guy Levitt, who you may remember from, yes, from some of the conferences at the WASB convention, but it was very substantive. And at some point, I'd like to set up with the board to report, you won't report, give a little bit more in-depth reports on what I've been learning from these things, and then applying them if you want to some of the things that we gather from.
I think that would be excellent, and I think we could set that up under one of our committees as opposed to being during a regular board meeting.
Oh, sure.
To be able to accomplish that. With these, if people are interested in, I mean, for example, the one in Madison on July 27th, if you would, certainly let Sandy know, but make sure that Carol is aware as well, because if there are enough people, obviously we have to post it as being something that a forum may be present, but no business will be conducted, so make sure that you keep Carol in the loop and she'll keep the little tick marks as to whether or not we need to post something, so thank you, Sandy.
I have just one other thing to mention. I went to the senior recognition morning for the scholarships that were awarded to the students, and there were 198,947 dollars of local money distributed to our students. And in total, when you take into account the scholarships that students are given by the schools they're going to or other sources, 890,947 dollars. It's extraordinary. It is such a joyful event to be there and to hear community members talk about the donations and contributions they're making and the confidence that they have in the young people who are receiving the scholarships.
To piggyon that, there has been a group that I represent there, where the young families, and they are, now live in Arizona, but they do own a place on the chain, they're only up here once a week. And Christine has written me several times, they've donated $60,000 a year since 2009. And they, this year they dropped it down to $15,000, but they said, because they moved to Arizona now, but they are from Illinois as well, but they said one of the main reasons why they continue to give money here was because our students are some of the few that write them continually to tell them where they're going, what their lives are, even after they graduated, they still stay in contact with them and let them know how their money helped them.
Wow.
So, and we're, like I said, we give to a lot of schools, but you guys are very far. So one of the students wrote them four times this year to let them know how he was continuing through, so.
Wow.
So that's why it's so important that we keep, that kids keep doing that, too.
So I'll segue on the same date, May 31st, when you were in at the awards. I was out at the track meet, at the fourth grade track meet, which was held right out here, and, which is the first time it was on the same day, and I think it's because of the snow days and all of that, things kind of got changed around because it was on the same, normally that wouldn't have been the case, because I was kind of hoping to get to the recognition, but I had committed to be a starter for the track meet, along with Mr. Elgar's medical came out of retirement to help me, and we had a great morning right out here with all the fourth graders and their staff, and it's a great event. The kids run their hearts out and/or jumped their hearts out, and it was a beautiful morning, as you remember back, beautiful morning that morning, so everybody was in good spirits and we had a lot of fun. And I will say this, the sound system that we have over at the stadium, in between races, they were playing some of the songs, and one of them is about, you know, letting the hounds out, you know? Well, yeah, who let the hounds out? So I looked up into the stands, because I was down on the track, left the stand, as soon as they played it, every one of the kids is dancing. It's like, oh my gosh, it's like they all just have to dance to that song, you know? So it was really a fun event, and it was great. And so it was, for me, it was a joy to be there.
I will not entertain any questions as to whether or not Matt danced or not.
You bet.
I would still like to add, I did attend a WSAB training session on law and what school board members allowed to do and not allowed to do, and that was run by at CISA 6, that was very enlightening. And then I made several visits, I was the, and I was asked to be the emcee for the student council trivia night, so that was a fun affair. I'll hear the kids write all the questions, they were very difficult, but we had six teams out there, and the first prize was $100, the second was 75, and it was all produced by the student council, the kids did a beautiful job. I was able to give out the diplomas at the W4K at the chain, so little kids came over and they were kind of afraid. I think someone thought maybe Santa Claus was there, but, you know, they were happy to see that.
You are a little scared.
Yeah, I know, I know. And then Sandy and I were here to judge the business class presentations, it was kind of like Shark Tank, the view that sat out there, the way they, some of those kids really did a nice job presenting.
Yes.
And then we got, eat a lot of good food, too. And then I went to the WLC in the middle school on the last day of school, that was a lot of fun, I got to see Ms. Colbert out there, and they were running different stations, the kids were able to go play frisbee golf, some kids were off to the side reading books, very delightful, all the teachers were out there working with the kids and playing with the kids, so, and at the WLC, they were signing yearbooks, and I had 15 little kids come up to me, would you sign my yearbook? I didn't know who they were, but it was cute, they all just wanted as many names they could get in their yearbooks, so, a lot of fun.
Very good. Anything else to report? All right, I, some of mine were, those were already reported on, so in the interest of brevity, we will move on, and thank you everyone for what you've been doing with various functions. Next, with upcoming meetings and other activities, Dr. Neil?
June 13th, this week, Thursday at 6:00 p.m. is the Personnel Committee meeting. On June 24th, at 1:00 p.m., there will be a Policy Committee meeting, also here. And then July 9th will be the next regularly scheduled board meeting at 5:15 p.m.
There will also be a Doleed Round on the 26th, but that was firm up after the agenda was put out, so that's why it's not on the agenda.
Okay, and I do believe everybody did have none of these at their closes when they came, and that does, that's indeed reflect that one as well. So, okay, very good, thank you. With that, we will go on to Part C, which is the Administrator's Report, and would you like to take this one with the agreement with Wywega Fremont?
I'm going to ask Director Marka in Turcoes to address this item.
Right. So the district currently has five full-time speech and language pathologists and one .8FTE. We have a .4FTE, speech and language pathologist, who is purchased through CISA 5 contract. So these therapists service students three years of age through 21-year-olds, and our services are provided in our district buildings as well as 4K sites, daycare, and POPS schools. One of our speech and language pathologists, Ms. Riley Mechanic, she, this is her first year in our district, works at the middle school, and she just completed her first year here and recently returned to school, last couple of weeks, from maternity with her third child. So Ms. Mechanic is requesting to reduce her full-time contract to .8FTEs to manage her work and home responsibilities. So we're able to support this request by reducing our CISA 5 contract to a .2FTE and entering into a 66.03 contract with the school district of Wapaka for a .4FTE. And we've done this previous, about five years ago, when we had Michelle Way, part-time, and then she became full-time speech and language pathologist with us. So entering into this agreement and reducing that contract, which is already reflected in the CISA contract for the 2019-20 school year, would be a cost savings to the district. So on the summary, it indicates that the school district of Wywega, 66.03 contract, it shares speech and language pathologists for 40%, with salary benefits would be $29,043.30. The CISA 5 speech and language pathologist contracted at a .2FTE, the reduction from that .4 to .2 is $19,500. The difference in Ms. Mechanic moving from a 1FTE to a .8FTE would be a reduction in her salary benefits of $11,538.90. So the district savings would then be $1,995.56. So I am recommending that we reduce Ms. Mechanic's contractual hours to a .8FTE and then to commit to, in a motion to move, to commit to a 66.03 contract with the school district of Wywega Fremont, and then 40% speech and language pathologists.
So Marie, give us an idea of, you know, all of the numbers, the points into, you know, .4 and .6. In reality, how often will this person be in our district in terms of days, like every day for X amount of time or certain days of the week? How does that work?
It would be about half-time, half-time, and-
Is that each day and a half a day?
It depends. I think they're, she's going to have to be looking at the IEPs that she's responsible and her responsibilities at Wywega Fremont, and work that out, so might he just stays, like two and a half days, two and a half, two days here. Whatever is most efficient.
And then who monitors that person? I mean, who is her direct supervisor?
Her direct supervisor would be the director at Wywega Fremont, but then we would be-
Because we're contracting with them as opposed to the other way around?
Correct. But then there's always really close collaboration, so Laurie Schmidt would be working closely with that person, that director.
Okay. And while there are some modest savings to us, which is, any savings are appreciated, you feel comfortable that we'll be providing services we need to.
Absolutely. The person that we're looking at, Wywega Fremont has hired to assist with this is somebody who did student, I don't know what to call it, her internship here in Wapaka, she's a local person and is upstairs, so she'd be a great fit.
Is there any possibility that if over the summer we were to enroll a couple of students who may be in need of the services, that that might change the amount of time that that person would be spending?
Um, not-
Because, I mean, this is a very small caseload, I suspect.
Um, not, probably for this school year, but-
Just push up those caseloads.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I approve to reduce contractual hours of speech and language pathologists, Ms. Mechanic, from a 1FTE to a .8FTE for the 2019-20 school year. And also to commit to a one-year 66.031 contract with the school district of Wywega Fremont for a 40% speech and language pathologist during the 2019-20 school year.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is middle school roper repair.
So each summer, we threaten earmark infrastructure projects that are the most pressing for the district, the district has beautiful facilities. We have hundreds of different sections of roofs on different schools, and the most pressing need for our infrastructure this year appears to be, which has been problematic, oh, or at least this year more so than ever, we've been able to build two sections before. The methodology we use since 2011 is basically to bid out the labor and the material separate, so we get a brand-new product adhere to the roof and the labor separate. And it's been respect, there's a huge specification for this project, document that the vendor, the labor has to adhere to, or the brand-new product would be available. But getting it on the schedule is for the roper, ropers is, it's now some time to get earmarked for that. So I build it, it's all about infrastructure, 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 and keep it maintained, and the leaks and the thousands of rivets that are on this roof continue to be problematic. And so as I look at the overall structure of all areas, this district infrastructure, this seems to be the most pressing, so I'm asking for, and it's within the 2019-20 maintenance budget, to go forward. I was able to negotiate- to go forward. I was able to negotiate yesterday a five-thousand-dollar reduction in labor. So, I'm asking for the board for a recommendation to the middle school roof repair from White Hart Roofing for the labor cost of one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, seven-sixty-six. Won't exceed that. And then for the materials, a ninety-two thousand dollars. Questions?
Normal bid process was followed?
Correct.
And when would this particular project start, do you think?
Well, if the board approves it this evening, then we can earmark this schedule. We'll be in summer. We'll work around summer school and it will be completed before the teachers roll into the district.
Will there be any expected disruption of any kind?
No, we'll have to work around, we'll work with Laura and we'll work directly around any activities that are going on. To be clearly cautioned, gave marked security safety, there'll be, there's regulations and rules that how the labor individual vendor has to act on school grounds versus our policies and regulations. So, there should be no interruptions.
How long does it take?
It could take about two weeks.
Since you brought up the, sorry. Since you brought up the dollar amount in terms of that it's in the budget already, we've talked about this before, but where are we in standing of that budget in terms of infrastructure or capital improvements?
Are you talking, what, are you talking about this year's budget?
Yes.
Coming in?
Yes.
I would say that early, I've been crunching the numbers last week and this week in payroll going forward, six payrolls, and all indications to me is I, at this point in time, I believe the district will have two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollar revenue exceeding expenditures. So, to the good.
No, let's stop right there. Is that capital improvement line item?
No, that's not a line item whatsoever. The capital improvements are just formulated within the maintenance budget. It holds its own, its own, this step. The capital improvements as far as, as far as, you know, billing and rebuilding or things like that, that would be a total capital improvement. This is just part of the maintenance and wear and tear on the facilities and infrastructure going forward. So, what I see is a potential, and I think, I think my data a little bit higher. I see two-hundred-and-sixty-six if we're coming in this year revenues over expenditures of two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. With the new budget coming out, I see that potentially just the initial dollar amount that would be bringing to the table, I'm not counting special education aid because that comes in a year after the act, after our annual, special education, the annual budget. It's delayed one year. So, what I'm seeing, for pupil aid, strictly that's the number I'm looking at. If that increases two-hundred dollars per pupil, it's already at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per pupil. That brings in potentially four-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars, more than that early projection I gave to you in June, which would balance the budget and potentially balance that three-hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall. I believe I showed you, I believe that's the number I showed you earlier in June. So, I believe we can bring a balanced budget next year and we'll come in this year to the good. That's my early prediction.
With regard to this specific request, I know you have a timeline of projected replacements of various capital items, whether it's roofs, spoilers, et cetera. Was this along that line? Were you anticipating this at this time?
Yes, this was anticipated. The roof projection was anticipated going forward. Which one, it became evident this fiscal year that this, this would be the one to do this summer. These two areas. The other areas of capital improvement, there'll be some HVAC components that need to upgrade automated logic to our HVAC systems. There'll be some components within that. And within the budget, we could accommodate some of that, and that's roughly seventy-five thousand dollars for forty thousand dollars for automated logic. That's our whole control system that's antiquated, needs to be upgraded. And that we probably could have absorbed in the budget, but fixing, getting some boiler replacements and things such as that, and HVAC repairs with this for pupil aid, with the salary, satisfying the salary line, this can still be, we can still do that other maintenance part as well.
Getting back to roofs for just a moment, I know this was an unusual year with the amount of snowfall that we had on our roofs with the addition of rain. We had quite a number of issues. Can you give us a read of where we are exclusive of these two areas?
Certainly. There'd be a multitude of minor repairs on the high school. There's some minor leaks on the high school. Those dollars alone probably won't exceed five thousand dollars. There'd be a minor repair on Chain Elementary as well, certainly in that ballpark as well. The truss infrastructure for the gymnasium, certainly as we looked at it, we know that the curtain was part of the equation. The curtain lowered. The curtain in the middle of the gym was, as the secondary time we measured it, the curtain actually was, the weight from the trusses actually weighed it down and literally appeared to the naked eye that the trusses were indeed in trouble. But more than likely, it appears that the trusses weren't in that, there's a small fix on it, basically a five-thousand-dollar to ten-thousand-dollar fix on those repairs just to reinforce the trusses of the gym. So, the gym is physically sound, engineered, certified. And Aaron Jensen is currently working on getting that curtain with a better adhering so it doesn't sink in the middle of the gym. Because that was initial, the initial individuals we saw that saw, measured that the trusses are going because the curtain sitting, the middle curtain's in the floor. But there's other issues that were part of that. I don't know if that helps, but that's really overall roofs.
The other leak signs you're saying are issues that you're saying that we experienced this spring that are relatively minor fixes.
Absolutely.
They will be done in-house?
In-house. No. There'll be, we have, fixing some of those leaks are going to be two thousand, within the maintenance budget, two thousand to five thousand dollars for all those leaks. And some of them were just general maintenance, cleaning of the drains. Popping the drains when the snow was, and outside drains go literally through the building and then there's a drain outside the parking lot in the thick clock with freezing. And they're now popped in the water pools on the roof. And it's because they have no place to go. Once you pop the drain, we know what happened. It released all the water on the roof. So, water and nothing else to do but pool on the roof and then try to find a place to leak. So, we know that was part of the problem with our general location of drain maintenance. But there are some, and there are some minor ones, and that would be what the maintenance department can fix. I'm anticipating, and we're already looking at them with the consultant, and we anticipate two to five thousand dollars under the general maintenance, which is not the middle school.
So, the answer to my question is yes, it is. Any help with repairs?
It's a, it will be a combination. There could be a vendor coming on like White Hart Roofing to fix whatever maintenance department can, but still the cost is the same ratio.
So, do I understand correctly, we have roofs that are currently leaking?
Yeah, there's some minor leaks, yes.
Carl, as much as I can absorb all of your numbers, I think we've had a request in the past, could we get this on paper?
Certainly.
We need to look at numbers on paper in terms of line items so we can kind of get a snapshot of where we are. And then you can, when you explain to us that we will have X amount, that we might have a deficit, but then we're going to be saving over here, so we maybe have a surplus, we can see that. I mean, I'm a visual kind of person. I want to see that on paper. So, if you can get that to us for next month, would that be possible?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, then we can, we can all kind of talk about it then from the numbers that you've given to us.
So, let me ask a question. So, the chain will be, because when I went over, I saw some buckets around and stuff, but there's a.
The chain is being fixed this summer as well. But it's certainly, it's not to the, it's between the two and five thousand in the outer range. Not to fix those. It's been looked at and we're just waiting for summer to get on it.
Other question?
Do we have a motion?
I got it.
Not yet.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. This has to do with the roofing request for the middle school. And if I'm correct, the amounts would be not to exceed one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand for the labor and ninety-two thousand for the materials, and that would be done this summer. So, move.
The request for the amount was slightly different, one sixty-six, seven sixty-six for labor. I'd rather ground it. I know it's.
Yeah, yeah, okay, sorry. I just.
Ninety-two, two twenty-four for material.
Those would be the numbers.
Okay, thank you. And there was a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Monitoring report.
Sure. So, as you know, every building works tirelessly, and every single year, they develop a continuous school improvement plan. And tonight is really about sharing with you the results of those individual continuous school improvement plans. I'm going to do a couple of slides as kind of an overview, kind of a grounding, and then I'm going to turn it right over to the principals. So, just as a reminder, you know, our vision here in the school district of Wapaka is we're committed to excellence, and this is our framework. These are the aspects that we really believe are going to help improve student learning. So, every single one of these areas impacts student achievement. Regardless, if we're talking guaranteed viable curriculum, commitment by students and staff, parents, administration, or we're talking about a safe and collaborative learning environment, these are the core beliefs, pillars that we have around our continuous school improvement plans. As I shared with you earlier this year, our data continues to show that we're trending in the right direction. And if you look, next slide, please. Again, just as comparison, where we've ranked the last several years in terms of just our region or our CISA, by focusing on and organizing some of our continuous school improvement efforts, I would suggest we continue to make gains within our area in terms of student achievement. So, sorry, next, yeah. So, it doesn't just happen by chance, of course. It happens again by focusing on what we've been focusing on for the last couple of years. Guaranteed viable curriculum documents, target-based assessments, grading and recording, and review of best instructional practices. I would say those are kind of been the three that we focused the most energy on the last couple of years. So, we're going to continue to see student achievement increasing. We've also added a couple of new tools this year to our staff in terms of leading data indicators. Things like the iReady, or we did an ACT Aspire intern, or we did a pre-ACT for our juniors this year. And that's working to align really our classroom-based assessments with these leading indicators so that we can better predict how well our students are going to do on what I would call our lagging data indicators. The forward exam, the ACT, the Aspire, for example. We don't get those results back until the kids are already out of their current classrooms. So, that's kind of, you know, your autopsy at the end of the day. We don't want to wait for the autopsy. We want to go in with a physical, knowing proactively what we can do to improve our expectancy, so to speak. That's where things like the iReady and the ACT Aspire intern and the pre-ACT came in. So, you're going to hear more about those assessments and how those help guide the principals and the staff to work over the course of the year.
Mark, can I inter?
Yes, sir.
So, what is the turnaround for those kinds of testing?
We'll get them July.
So, they're taken in what month?
Usually, well, the ACT end of February, early March, the forward exams. The Aspire are usually April, May timelines.
So, we still don't get them in the same year, I mean, in the same school year, though?
No.
No.
No. And so, that's where, if you can kind of think of that stepping stone, those classroom assessments align to these diagnostic assessments, or I call them leading data indicators, like the iReady, you know, the pre-ACT, for example. We get those results almost, well, the iReady immediately, the pre-ACT certainly within a month when the students take them.
And so, those we get, the classroom teachers can take a look at immediately, not immediately, within a few weeks?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And then again, between classroom, those diagnostic or predictives, hopefully we see that there's an alignment with those lagging indicators. So, we don't want to be surprised by that, and it's not all about student test scores either. But it's about what do our kids need to be successful? So, we get one year's growth out of every kid during that one school year. So, these are just additional tools to help. I'm not saying that teachers haven't used other tools in the past to help with that. It's just, these are a little bit more normed and actually normative assessments.
Well, it's nice to hear that there are some that are out there because, you know, the old knock about the tests in the past where you took them and you wouldn't get them till a year later. And by that time, your classes have changed, students have moved on or whatever, and even the students realize, they always would say, "Well, what did I get on the test?" Well, as soon as I find out, I'll tell you.
Yeah. And the other part of it is, you know, it's interesting from a tool standpoint how much emphasis some of our teachers put on getting these results back and sharing those results with the students. And to see the students talk about growth and achieving, you know, what this system comes back and says, "This is your expected growth, and here's your stretch goal, growth goal." And to see where the student falls with that, you know, sometimes those kids really pay attention to that. But it certainly helps us from an intervention standpoint, too, to really be able to dig down deeper into what it is that's causing a student to get the scores that they're getting. It's not, you know, "You're a five-seventy, I'm a five-seventy, we must know the same stuff." And, no, that's not the case. We've got different knowledge bases that guide us to that overall score. So, the tools that we've implemented this year, especially the iReady and the pre-ACT, the data that comes back, comes back so much more user-friendly. So, remember the days of math testing or star testing, it was seventeen clicks sometimes to get to that? And so, who wants to do that much data mining to get to the stuff that really will help change our instructional practices? Feedback we've got is that the tools are much better aligned to assist us in understanding where those gaps are. So, we can work to close those gaps. So, we can achieve one year's growth in one year's time for all students.
What grades take the iReady?
K through eight. We do do some ninth graders with it who are deemed additional support in areas of reading and math. And it's only reading and math.
Oh, it's only reading and math, for all grades?
For iReady.
Yeah.
So, I think you guys have heard enough from me. Let's start over with the principals. They're the ones that.
Well, before you're done, what is it, just to remind us all, what is it that the state of Wisconsin requires we have to do?
Forward, okay, so forward exam, third through eighth grade. And there's multitudes within there, but for simple reason. ACT Aspire, grades nine and 10, and the ACT grade 11.
Okay. Those are required by all school districts?
Those are required by all school districts.
Okay.
And charter schools are required to take those students, have to take those as well?
Part of that.
Charter school students also have to take those.
What is the? Public. What is the ACT Aspire? Is it like a practice or?
Great question. So, it's not a practice because the scores are actually going to be calculated for the first time this year, well, in the upcoming state report cards. You know, we have report cards and the schools give report cards. They're going to be looking at growth measures. And so, what they realize is by having, you know, that focus on third through eighth, then just 11th, there's a gap, you know, between those ninth and 10th grade. And so, the ACT Aspire, I'll call it a pre-ACT, but it's scaled down for ninth grade or it's scaled down for 10th grade. And it does give you kind of a predictive score to what the students would get on the ACT. But it's not, it's not as intense, I'll say. You know, it's not a four-hour.
And is it, does it do the same categories that the ACT does, reading, math, science?
Correct.
And writing? Aren't there four on ACT?
Yeah. English. Yeah, and so, what we're looking for is always, again, just to compare our scores in math, doesn't really do our math instructors a whole lot of good. Within each of those assessments, there's different domains. And so, what we're really looking for is that alignment, and how is that student progressing within those specific domains? Now, one of the issues, in my opinion, is that between all those assessments, there's not a hundred percent consistency with the domains from the forward to the Aspire to the ACT. And so, that's where we gotta use a little bit of analysis and predictive measures and so forth with it.
Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but the ACT follows the College Ready and Standards. And so, what happens at the junior level, they're expected to read through like advanced algebra through that level. But let's say at the freshman level, it's only like the Algebra I classes that they would be expected through. And with some limited geometry. But then at the sophomore level, now we're expected to have Algebra I and geometry, pretty much cover those standards. And then with some advanced algebra, but not heavy duty. So, it's just not kidding all the. So it's just not hitting all the standards at those levels, because those kids haven't needed the, to the level yet.
They'll take it most classes.
Yeah. And so the difference between the ACT Aspire and the pre-ACT is that the pre-ACT is really a lot.
Right.
But instead of having sixty math questions in sixty minutes, you get forty-five math questions in forty-five minutes. So it's not quite as intense, but it gives the kids a really good taste of what it's gonna be like. Again, it provides us great feedback to our, to our staff. And one of the things Mr. Rossy will talk about is, is we thought the ACT Aspire intern would give us really good data that's aligned to the Aspire and to the ACT. What we did in the fall, what we found out was, hmm, we actually got better data from the pre-ACT. And if all of our juniors, they mandated they have to take the ACT, and we do the pre-ACT for the juniors, next year we're gonna do the pre-ACT for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, so that by the time those juniors take the ACT for real, they will have done three pre-ACTs, in addition to two ACT Aspires, which are state mandated for eleventh, ninth, and tenth grade.
Do they still give that pre-ACT to middle school kids?
Upon request, I think.
There were kids.
They used to take, if kids wanted to, they could request to take it, or their parents could request.
As in the youth period, some schools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was crazy.
I mean, one of the things that we did is we worked.
It was just a lot of money.
Well, we work with, like, Eric Larson out of CISA VI, or First Educational Resources team, we bring in subs for the teachers, and we do kind of a data dive to make sure our teachers understand what the ACT and what those components and those domains are really asking about, provide resources to them. And so, if a teacher, you know, connects, and we try to make sure they have the right materials and books, too, the ACT Red Book, as we call it, the Test Prep, the i, you know, there's nothing stopping anybody from going out and purchasing that on their own and implementing some of those components into their coursework. We recommend it as they build their courses to pay attention to what standards are routinely hit, most frequently, what are our kids gonna be asked to do or perform or answer on the ACT, you know? A PGA golfer doesn't go to the golf course the first day of the competition play, just that day, not knowing what's out there and what's expected of them, and not having practiced on that course before they, you know, so.
The universities have also come up with an early math placement test, you know, like the placement you have to take, and I know that a lot of teachers give that before they go and take their placement exams, and just like Mark said, it's giving the kids a little bit of insight of, what are these tests gonna be like, what do I need to know? Some teachers even use them as their, their pre and.
Close assessment.
Close pre and post-test for the year for their own evaluation.
Our staff does a great job with preparing kids, they really do. Again, we just wanna make sure that they have the right tools and understanding and taking the time to dive into it, but not overwhelming, like, you can become data paralyzed, right? That's not what we want. We wanna be data-informed, they know what makes the kids tick, they've gotta be relationship-focused, like we've again continued to preach that. This is just the data side of the equation, and I don't wanna take away that they focus upon relationships. I think you guys mentioned through your school visits, especially as we wrapped up the school of the year, how much those relationships matter and the outcome of those relationships, especially when a student feels comfortable, safe, and secure, and excited to go over to that teacher's classroom. The data will take care of itself, but we also have to do school learning objectives and continuous school improvement plans, and so, without further ado, I'm gonna be quiet and turn it over to the principals.
Sounds good.
Once again. So, I think Mr. Erspomner and Pancret from first.
She's leaving me hanging, so I'll take.
Thanks to talk.
That truth comes out. I'm gonna stand up here so I can help explain some of these. Greg, will you go to the next, or, next slide, and then just click on the first, the school improvement plan? So yesterday at our breakfast, we had to talk about, the principals raised, talked about how, stories of how we impact and inspire, and I focused mine on how the staff actually impact and inspire each other. So by doing that, you'll see a direct correlation to what happens at the Learning Center with the results that we have. So our results, that I'm gonna show you in a minute, came from grades one through four, and I'll throw kindergarten in at the end, but if they didn't take it until the winter, the little tykes were just a little bit not ready to use the computers or the iPads in the beginning of the year. We're gonna try it next year, but we waited till the winter this year. So they're grades one through four in most of our data. So in the fall, in our math, there were fifty-eight kids of the four hundred and thirty-eight kids who tested on the iReady assessment, one grade level or two grade levels below where they're supposed to be. So our goal, trying to keep it lofty but yet reachable, we went to eighty percent of those fifty-eight kids, which we were asking for forty-six of those kids to be performing, performing at their appropriate grade level after the spring test. So our results in the spring, in May, we only had five kids that were tested two grades or below grade level in the entire school. So, instead of forty-six, it was actually fifty-three students, so we did meet that goal. We began with twelve percent of our student population, grades one through four, that were two or more grade levels below, and we were down to two percent at the end of the year, and that's a pretty darn good accomplishment for our staff and for our students. So, just in case you weren't sure, we met our goal. So, the second part of the SLO was, you know, a lot of times we put a lot of programming into the kids who are struggling, and so the kids that are in the middle or at the top can be kind of, well, you're there, so you're good there, we're okay with that. Well, what we did is we focused on the other side of the spectrum as well, so the kids who were performing pretty high, of those four hundred and thirty-eight, we had a hundred and fourteen kids in the fall that tested at or above grade level. So we thought, well, let's keep an eye on them, we don't wanna put all our focus into one, one group of students or one side of that spectrum, and then not focus on the other side. So, we wanted all a hundred and fourteen kids to remain there in the spring. And so, in that part, not only did we have a hundred and fourteen, all of those hundred and fourteen make it, we had an additional two hundred and thirty-nine students make it in the building. So three hundred and fifty-three of the four hundred and fifty-seven students tested at or above grade level, which is a testament to what the classroom teachers and the special teachers working with them, and our title teachers, and everybody that takes part in that building, what they can do for kids, and that, that's inspiring and impactful when you look at that. So, again, we not only met our goal, we exceeded our goal on the other end. So those were the fall to spring tests in math, grades one through four. This, this right here, and I'll talk a little bit about what Mark said, and I guess I'll use this over here, this is the entire school, right here. So this is all of the students in grades one through four. This right here, the green arrow, is kids on grade level, on or above grade level in the fall. These were the kids one grade level below, these were the kids two grade levels below. This is what the triangle looked like at the end of the school year. So, we went from a real small area of kids on grade level to quite a few here, less at one grade level below, and one percent of the school, the kids in grades one through four were two or more below. And of those kids, there's help provided already set up, and they're working with more support to get them up to speed, and we'll talk about that stretch goal and typical growth. If you look over here to the right, this is Numbers and Operations, Algebra Thinking, Measurement in Data, and Geometry. So when you look at those, the big line up on top, we'll use Numbers and Operation. In the green, that's where the students ended the year, just in that domain in mathematics. If you look at the, it's kind of faded out right below it, and you can see how far the green went, you will actually get a visual of how far they improved in Numbers and Operation. So when our kids take these tests, and it's immediate results, as soon as the kid clicks submit, the results are there. There's no waiting for a day or two, it is instantaneous. So what happens is the teacher can say, "All right, little Johnny Erspomner did really, really well in geometry, but his lowest one was Numbers and Operations." Now, I know as a classroom teacher, that I need to focus on Numbers and Operations when differentiating my instruction for little Johnny Erspomner. So, it actually dials in on each student on a, on a much more individual basis than just a regular scale score that we used to use. So we used to use scale score of three fifty and a scale score of three seventy-five, okay, that we knew where they were on a scale score, but now we're able to break that down. And using iReady, not only does it break it down in those areas, each one of those areas has its own support system within that program, so teachers can go in and look at the iReady lesson plans, and they give tips on how to improve that student, you can watch tutorials on what the student might be struggling with and how to address that. There's an instructional piece where students can be diagnosed by this, and then they go into the instructional online piece as their intervention, or a type of intervention, or to measure how their interventions with that classroom teacher are going. So iReady has been very specific. So, that's the entire building, grades one through four, from the fall testing to the spring testing, and students who are on or at grade level, not only on the pyramid, but in every one of those domains in math.
John, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, as a district, we, I'm gonna ask for your opinion.
Okay.
Not so much the data. We added some instructional coaches in math, in, 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 in English. I assume that they worked in your building?
They did.
So, from your opinion, how much of a factor do you think that was in terms of the overall improvement?
I, I think it played a part in our building. I think, to be fair to the instructional coaches, it was their first year, they're trying to figure out exactly what is that role. They use this information, I speak to them with this information. Matter of fact, sometimes we have some pretty good discussions, because they're coming at it from a different perspective, because we can hit one button and the data can change. And so I'll get into that in a little bit, but I believe this has an opportunity to be great information for the instructional coaches, and I know the first year was a little bit different. I know they all would like to, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, would like to be working with the teachers more, one-on-one. In that first year, it was, what is the role, how are they going to be used, what, what expertise can they bring to the table in each classroom? We're getting there, and this piece is definitely going to help, because they do have discussions with classroom teachers on the results from the iReady. Greg, if you'll just flip through, what I did is, this is fourth grade, just fourth grade results, there's third grade results, you'll see in third grade, there were nobody, not one student was two years below, that's, that's pretty good, that's very difficult to do. Second grade, same thing, you'll see the fall to spring. First grade, one percent, that boils down to about one student that's really struggling, two, two grade levels or below, and you'll see that eighty-one percent in first grade are walking out at or above grade level. And that's a triangle that, we wanna go as high as we can, but once you hit that eighty and above, you're doing pretty well as a school builder. And then kindergarten started in the, in the winter, so that's their, the window two is their January iReady test scores in the same areas in math, and then their spring test scores, and you'll see that ninety-three percent of those students are walking out at or above of grade level. So in summary, I will say, you know, we've had, I've been around here long enough to go through MAP, STAR, and now iReady. Of the three, iReady seems to be the most useful tool that we have had for a couple of reasons. It's just, it's updated and, and it's real easy to use, but we also had in place more training for staff members than we have had for the other programs, so, and I know I kind of badgered Mark all year going, "We can't just bring in a program without having training for those teachers," and we were able to provide that when they needed it and what part they needed it on. The teacher toolbox, our professional learning communities that we have on Wednesdays, that teacher toolbox was, by every grade level, being looked at, learned how to use it, the teachers were learning together how to use it, and there's a lot of examples at parent teacher conferences or at IP meetings where some of the lessons that they learned in the teacher toolbox actually showed up right there, so, and we're just, we're still new at that, so as we get more used to this and get into this, I think that that teacher toolbox can be a great aid for our staff members and our, and our students. So any questions about the SLO? Last year we did writing, if you remember, this year we did math. We're gonna look at a couple of different things for next year. So the AGR, the Achievement Gap Reduction Report, that report, we have to come to the school board every year, once in the winter and then once again in the spring. And what I'd like to focus on, if you, Dr. Neen, if you could, yeah, minimize that just a little bit, and go over to where it says, just scroll over just a little bit, okay, right there. Okay, so, that last column, at the end of the spring semester, when you look at the end of the spring semester, ninety-eight percent of the kindergartens, kindergartners, a hundred of six of a hundred and eight are leaving kindergarten at or above grade level, two percent, or two of the hundred and eight students are leaving one grade level below, and we just use phonological awareness and phonics in, in reading. So I wanna point out the next paragraph, although ninety-eight percent of our students are at grade level, only thirty percent met their annual typical growth while sixteen percent met their stretch growth. So when we started looking at our AGR results, we said, "Okay, we're at grade level, but how are each of the individual students doing?" And so with the iReady, we're, we're able to measure annual typical growth for every student, what they should, one year's growth for one year's of instruction. But that stretch growth is an important piece, because that's where we talk about closing the gap, and I know Maureen and I've had many conversations on, how do we know for closing the gap? Well, the iReady has a real easy screen to go to for each individual student that will show if they met their stretch goal. So students who are meeting their stretch goal above annual typical growth are students who are supposed to be closing that gap with their peers. Now, we have kids that met a huge stretch growth, I mean, way past their stretch growth, but they started much lower, so even though they made their stretch growth, they're still not academically up to grade level with their peers, but they're much closer to their peers than they, than they once were. So that's the great thing about, about the iReady. And I know it's just a program, and I, I too caution everybody, it's one time shot in the, in the year that they take this test, and if they had a bad day, they had a bad day, but from an administrative point of view, iReady has a lot of capabilities that really helps us measure how we're doing. And so I won't go through all of the reading and math, it's, you can have a tenure report, very similar, what you'll see at every single grade level, but because of the AGR report, and our next thing, if you would, just pop out of there and go into the, the awards part of that. So I wanna mention this, one, because I'm very proud of, of the entire building, I'm proud of, and happy that I get to work with Jody, she does a great job, and it's a lot of her hard work that goes into why we are gold in all three of these areas. It's an extensive, extensive process to apply for these things. And so, not only were we gold in mathematics, reading, and behavior, again, that's the second year, and you'll see we're the only school in the state of six hundred and sixty-four schools, whatever it was, that maintained that level. We're real proud of that, but when we looked at that, we wanted platinum, we wanted to be the first public school in the state of Wisconsin to be platinum. I promise you this, we're gonna get there. But one of the things that we found out we were missing was called, something called risk ratio. That risk ratio was something that was new to me, Jody picked up on it, and she did a lot of work on it, and we started compiling our data for the risk ratio. So, we have a math goal this year, we had a writing one last year. The AGR report does reading and it does math, but if we do risk ratios, we can use the information provided in iReady and provided in our PBIS program, and we can actually measure very easily all three of those areas every single year, instead of just picking one area for an SLO. So something that we've learned through iReady, and we're learning stuff every day, but through our application process and what they emailed us back, I think that we have a pretty good focus of what we're gonna be working on at the Learning Center as we move forward, so we're measuring all three of those areas and staying focused on all three of those areas each year, instead of just picking that, that one. And we're gonna be able to do that without changing anybody's days or anything like that. And so you will see, we're one of only six schools in the state that received gold in all three areas. We were the first public school last year to actually receive all three golds, and there's an asterisk there, if you click on that last screen, that's where it says that the Learning Center was the only school in Wisconsin that was recognized, that sustained their level of recognition. There was no platinum schools in the state this year, so we're, we're hoping, and we were close, so we're hoping that we're gonna get there. So, any questions for me?
I noticed in, in this last chart we were looking at, at the end of each semester, there's, the last column talks about the strategies that you use to reduce the achievement gap, and it indicates class size reduction.
Yes, so.
And I just wondered how you accomplished that.
So what we're doing, we've always been considered a Sage school, but Sage was just replaced with AGR, Achievement Gap Reduction. So in order to be an Achievement Gap Reduction school, you have to have K through second, one teacher to every eighteen students, or you could have two teachers, up to thirty students in a classroom. The district has decided years ago to also include third grade in that AGR. So although we're reporting, it's, it's K one, two, but we also included third grade, we report out to third grade, but that's part of the whole program, is you have to be one to eighteen to do that. So we're automatically in that, that's why we have to put that report in every year.
John, just kind of thinking, thinking out of the box just a little bit, and I know because you are instrumental in the summer school program, is there anything that we offer during our summer school programming that would help with the reduction of those students to either achieve higher in terms of where they were and/or exceed? Do we do anything that specifically for students? I know, I know there's a lot of things going on at summer school, don't, don't get me wrong, but, I mean, do we, do we target anything specifically that might help?
So for years, we've been in enrichment type of summer school, a lot of courses.
Right, I know.
We continue to do that, but what, what I had people do who put in for classes, so individual teachers will submit classes they wanna teach, and so when they do that, what I had them do starting last year was, even if it's an enrichment course, I would like you to address how math and reading are incorporated into that enrichment course. So, did we do something for? So, did we do something formal note, but almost every one of those enrichment courses, there's part of that reading in math or science or social studies. Or, or even with the specials, FIDE, music and art, there's a lot of that that goes on. But we try to do that because you will see, you know, the dirty word, summer, summer slide in, in education where the kids come back and they take that fall test. If you're like, how did they go down? Well, that's six weeks and we added two weeks to summer school last year. So it used to be four weeks for years, we added two, so six weeks out of the summer, students have a place to go for that enrichment piece. And there's many classes that just work at pre-kindergarten, how to get ready for school. What's it look like, how, how do I be a student in school? So there's classes like that. But most of the other classes, I'm going to say from kindergarten up through fourth grade for sure, have that math and reading piece embedded into what they're teaching. Okay, thank you everyone.
Okay, who's the hard act to follow?
Well, it's good that John explained typical growth and stretch growth because that's the same thing you'll see in mine, I won't have to explain that.
Greg, you closed the one that you ordered where you mentioned. Of course I did. Did you click?
Okay, the first one is the AGR report. And click on that.
You opened that one too?
Yep. It's going to look similar to WLC's, it's the same exact questions. We're measuring the same thing except I think I, we used to attain a different test at the kindergarten level just because those kindergartners didn't start out taking the iReady in fall. Still measuring the phonemic awareness though. So if you go through that chart, you'll have it in your, in your packets, you'll see that all of our goals were met using the class size reduction, same as the other building. And our school learning objective. So WLC was just in math, this is reading and math. 90%, we, we looked at the ones that were already at grade level at the beginning of the year. We wanted them to stay at grade level or, or go har, higher. And then of those who were at below, at least two levels below, we wanted them to attain their stretch growth, at least 80%. And the results were that in kindergarten, 96% did make that typical growth. And 63% of the ones that started two years, I don't know how they figure out if you're two years below and when you're in kindergarten, met theirs. First grade, 100% made the typical years growth. And then the 74 and 61 that suffered in reading and math. Second grade, 100% that were at grade level remained. And those below were over 80%, I have exclamation mark there because you'll see when you see the graph, that was a really hard class and it was amazing growth in that class. So there are those same diagrams that you saw from WLC. So the faded one on window one, that was in fall. And you can see that hardly any students were at grade level. So, in the end, at window three, you can see that we had no students left at two or more years below. And that was in reading, and this is in math. Same thing, no students left at more than two years below. So, the ideal to not have any yellow, that's our goal, keep working toward. So really good growth at Chain Elementary. And that's just the K2 this year. And then I have another report for the charter school.
So you're, you're K2, you're in the same Sage program there, I assume?
Correct, yep. This, whoops, one down. This is a template that also comes from the DPI, from our charter school program. So you'll see that looks like one of their graphs. We enter our performance measures when we wrote our grant and when we started the school, and those are going to be across the left side there. So our first one is that our students would demonstrate an increase in 21st century skills. Next month, we'll have our annual report to you, and I will go into detail, I'll actually show you what those rubrics look like and which 21st century skills we measure. But on those, you can see that at the mid-year, 74% had increased the proficiency across their projects. But at the end of the year, 93%. So we more than met our goal, which was that 60% of the students would demonstrate that increase. And you can see that each year in the five-year period of the grant, we expect more of the students. So by year five, 80%. Number two is about academic growth. So using the iReady, our rigorous project-based learning instruction will yield high student engagement and achievement. At mid-year, what is that, 62 and, and 55% were scoring, their iReady scores were above the district average in reading and math. But by the end of year, 72% were above the district average in reading and 71% were above the district average in math. And that's just a raw iReady score averaged out. So that one was really exciting.
Rhonda, did you already submit this to the state?
No, that will be submitted on the 15th.
Of?
June.
Of this month?
Yep. Another goal was that our achievement gap students, students who are either economically disadvantaged. I also measured students with disabilities and English language learners, we didn't have any of those. So, in the first two groups, we want them to close that gap. So at mid-year, 55% were on track to actually meet their stretch growth, which is to grow more than, than expected in the economically disadvantaged. And 66% and 33% of students with disabilities, we only have, we said just small numbers of students, there's only 55 students total. So one student can make a big difference. But at year end, 70% of the students in reading and 65 had met their growth targets. So reading and math respectively. And 100% of the students with disabilities met their stretch growth. So, a testament to our team teaching with our specialized teacher and our advisors. So that goal was also met, and our fourth goal is about community service hours, another pillar of our charter school. Up a little further. At mid-year, we had that one revised because we originally had that a student should have 24 hours of commu, community service by the end of their, let's say they were in our charter school from kindergarten to eighth grade. They had already, most of them had 20 hours of community service by mid-year. So we did revise that goal to be 100 hours at least of community service in their career at our school. So, there's the breakdown by, and grade three has to have 10, grade four has to have 12, grade five has to have 14. And 100% of the students did make that goal. So all four of our performance measures at the charter school were met this year and exceeded. And you'll have more details on that next month at the, yes.
Could you give a few examples of the kind of community service that the students did?
Sure, they did, they went to Harton Creek and pulled garlic mustard. They did the recycling for the whole building. They did, let me think of some of the things. They each have to record this all and I'll show you some of, some of the rubrics. Reading to the younger students, we have animals and garden work at the school that they have to complete. We have the community garden now, that was in there. And pick up at the roadside, some of the examples, but you'll see more in the annual report.
Rhonda, when you talk about achieving their stretch goal.
Yes.
Who, who sets that stretch goal?
That is set by the iReady test. And it's based on students that would, sometimes it does get them up to grade level, but sometimes it's just a really lot of accelerated growth more than that would be expected in order for them to catch up.
So if you had a student who was at a certain level and then they have a stretch goal, and I think John mentioned this, that doesn't always mean that they're going to be moving into the next category. It just means for them where they, where they're starting, that this is their expected.
Right.
Enhancement.
Um, I think usually it moves them a category, it might move from red to yellow, but it doesn't always move them to grade level, depending on where they started.
And that stretch is, is determined upon, upon where they start?
Correct.
So then they, you know?
Correct.
Yeah.
And even if they start high, they are given a stretch goal. Any questions for Chain or CEC?
Thank you. All right, so Ashley, can you click on the bottom link that I had?
Right here?
Yep, thank you. So I made some hard points that talked about the SLO, which was the first link, just to make it more user-friendly for everybody. So for our SLO this year, we focused on student writing. And we looked at the Lucy Hawkins Units of Study Pre-Assessment and noticed that our fifth and eighth graders were having the, the most difficulty with their elaboration and craft. And our sixth and seventh graders are having the most difficulty with their transitions. So we decided to focus on those specific, those specific domains throughout our school assessment. If you go to the next slide, our school SLO. Lucy Hawkins Units of Study uses a four-point rubric. And three is considered proficient and 2.5 is approaching proficient. So we, so we really like to see the students 2.5 or higher when we look at the scores overall. We decided throughout the year to provide our staff with, our non-ELA staff, an understanding of what the writing looks like, especially on those transitions and those elaborations and crafts that the students were needing to work on. And we gave those non-ELA staff professional development opportunities so that they could use that writing within their own curriculum. So we could have the writing occurring across the school. All right, and then the next slide will show us your, our first goal. So again, we wanted to provide writing opportunities and feedback in all content areas. And our first goal was with those, starting at one point, I'll go over here, starting at 1.4 at the pre-assessment at the beginning of the year, we wanted to grow to a full-scale score, so we wanted to end the year at 2.4, which is very close to that, the proficient point. And then our second goal was, as evidenced by scores in the spring writing assessment, we want 95% of our students to gain one full point in their writing proficiency goals. So, if we look at our first goal then, we'll see that we did reach our goal and exceeded it by point one. So our fall score was 1.4. And by mid-year, we'd already gotten almost two that full point ahead. And by the end of the year, again, we reached a 2.5, and so we exceeded it by point one. And you can see, I think it's really cool that, look at the numbers down in the ones and 2.5s. And by the end of the year, we definitely moved the numbers more into the mid, the 2.5s and the 3s. Okay, next slide.
Before, before you move, the bio column, number of students with scores?
Yes. So we had, so that is the number of students that took the test all three times. So based on student movements or being absent or just simply refusing to take the test or something like that to move here. So we did not, and some of the test scores came in late after this data was already in.
Laura, do we still give the eighth graders a test, a, a writing assessment? That, we used to always have those writing assessments that high school students and others would grade and then before they became freshmen. Do we still do that?
Not that I'm aware of.
We don't do that any longer? Okay.
All right, so next.
So without reduction. Without reduction, the number that took the score, what can I, or can I not read into where that average may have moved? And I realize an average is an average, but if you're taking.
Less scores.
27 less students or 28 less students who may have been on that lower end. I mean, how, how do we potentially attempt to interpret that or do we not?
So we should, and, and we have addressed that when we looked at our lessons learned and our what should we do in the future. Maybe we can give this test before the forward and the iReady. Because I think that, and that's in my summary, I think that some of the students had gotten test burnout. And it got to the end of the school year and it was difficult for them to sit down for more assessments. In addition, we, you know, when you look at the students moving in and out of the district or being, not taking the test all three times, not taking this assessment all three times, then that decreases that number as the year goes on too.
And if you remember, this is grades five through eight. So consider, is it possible that 30 students during the course of the year, grades five through eight, moved in or out of the middle school?
Is it possible, just look at the 529 that took all three?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just report on those.
Yeah, absolutely. We definitely could have done that too. And we have all that data, we could still extract that data if we needed to.
I just think it would be interesting to see where those numbers would be, and I'm not asking you to pull that right now, but it just, and I realize, yes, students move in and out, students are sick, students are whatever, but I'm not sure what my takeaway is or isn't from that though.
Yeah, definitely makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
So our second goal, unfortunately, of 95% moving one full point was not reached. We had 65% as you can see here that reached that with 20% additionally moving up half a point. So this is something that we definitely want to look into more next year. And then if we go to the next slide again, I can speak to what some of those reasons might have been. So again, we achieved goal one but not goal two. When we approached this year, it was going to be very much writing-focused and doing that during professional development. And as the year proceeded, we realized how much more target-based grading work we actually need to do with our staff in order to report out well at semester and that year. And so our focus really switched over to target-based, like, target-based grading, which decreased our ability to focus on our, our writing SLO. Additionally, as I mentioned, our post-assessment writing was right after the forward and the iReady testing, which may have affected some scores based on just a lot of, of testing that happened. All right, so let's go to the next.
I'm going to support you on that because the big huge switch that your teachers had to make on the type of grading they were doing. I mean, that, that was a huge transition there as, and for the kids to transition on how they read their grades.
Absolutely.
How they react, how do parents react to those grades?
And we rolled it out so much faster than some of the other schools have done in the area. And our staff were playing catch-up the whole year, so, I mean, they did a great job, but then we definitely switched our focus a lot. So, I just wanted to share this because I, I shared this actually at, on, on Monday. But just a pride, a point of pride is that we had 902 documented contacts home that were positive. Not to mention just random emails or, you know, talking to somebody and giving positive feedback, these were actually documented. We sent home what are known as busted cards, so that's, you were busted for doing the whack-a-way. And staff fill them out and, and send them home to people. So it's just, imagine the ripple effect that that creates in our community. So another point of pride. Look at our fifth grade staff. They actually took time every Friday during their common planning time to do that together. And I think they've really aspire, or the other grades are aspiring to do the same thing next year. It's a good way to end the week. All right, next slide. So, I'm just going to take a second then to show you how the staff have improved on that target-based grading. So the first sheet on there is a self-assessment sheet. And if you just open it up, I'll just show you the front, front page, you don't have to go through the whole, whole thing. But part of what we're asking our staff to do are develop learning targets and success criteria for students. So the staff, just slide up to the next, there's actually a question, or a learning target. The staff self-assess every month on this learning target and then the success criteria go, whoa, that learning target, they rate, they rate themselves. Okay, so then if you go to the next link on the board slides, we inputted all of their answers into a spreadsheet. And so if you minimize that to like 75%, you can see how cool the transitions are from month to month. So they get a color pink or red for ones, when they rate themselves a ones, which is a lower, needs improvement. Twos and then threes are green, so that's where they feel really proficient with that target. Can you just scroll so that all we see are the colors? I think that that's, so scroll down on the, we don't need to see what they're rating themselves on? Oh shoot. Okay. So you can see lots of yellows and, and reds, right? So now if I were to go to February, it's going to look a little bit more yellow and green. So you can go to the, the. So you can go to the February slide on the bottom. Okay, so we're seeing a little bit more greens and yellows. And this, again, this is the staff self-reporting on this. And then March, it's going to be even more green and yellow. And then April is even more so. So you can see how the staff have been improving month after month on their own rating of their own work. And it was a great reminder to the staff of what the expectations were every month.
And then, other than us looking at this here, where did that data go? I mean, they assessed themselves.
Yep.
They inputted it, and then what?
So I shared this with the staff, and then, it's not going anywhere. It's just for them to self-reflect every month and for us to show the growth that they're making. It's a celebration, really. Oh, well, and I should say too, when they indicated ones, I always ask the coaches, why as a staff would you like coach support in those areas, or support for myself? So we did follow up with the staff if they were needing improvement in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. You'll notice that the high school does not have as much leading data as the other buildings. The MTSS coaches, myself, and I L T members met. We reviewed the historical ACT data that we had and talked about the prior year SLO that the building came up with. The staff felt very confident that they wanted to continue to go with and build or expand on the SLO from the year before. The ACT test is really truly a reading test. And the complexity part of that, felt that, the staff felt that it was important for us to continue to grow based on that SLO. The MTSS coaches not talking, I believe, work with you two around your SLO. Because they were helping us as we built ours. Here's some thinking, most people only have the strength and the knowledge that you have. So part of the ACT trend data that we are seeing here is the areas in red indicate where we were below the state average. Fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen. We were hitting a couple of different areas that we were not quite at state level. The focus was for seventeen and eighteen on the complex reading for the high school. And one area that I do want to point out is the R score in reading went from thirty-four to forty-one, where the state actually dropped. So it was that collective effort that the staff had, I really believe, had an impact. Their SLO was built around one article per semester that they were using. And we chose to go to have two articles per semester. This is some of the other information that led us down that road. Number of students who are below proficient, proficient, or above proficient each one of those years in text complexity on the ACT. One area that I want to point out is the difference between sixteen, two thousand sixteen and seventeen, and then seventeen and eighteen. The number of students who were below proficient dropped that ten percent there. And actually, you can see that they moved to the proficient. We're hoping that with our work this year, that we'll have indications that it even goes up higher. One of the areas I want to mention as well is that above proficient stayed the same. I'm hoping that we're able to, we talked about that, and how are we challenging our more advanced readers so that they can also grow?
These are percentages? Are these real numbers?
No, they're percent percent.
So sixty percent, I look in the bottom line, sixty percent, fifty-nine percent, twenty-five percent, etc.
Correct.
Okay.
And now the juniors, this is a junior class.
And so the new data for this will be in another year from now?
Well, it'll be available
It'll be available, but we won't see it for another year.
Right, and that's the struggle that we have.
Yeah, right.
We did, oh, well, okay, next slide. One of the things that we're talking about is that some of our teachers are grade-specific. So how do we help encourage them, grade-specific? And the reason why we did that as well is some of our work, professional development from our MTSS coaches with the staff were grade-specific. So they're finding articles and things for our staff to work with the students that were more aligned around certain grades. So we chose three percent as a measure of growth that we would have for a measure for ourselves. But we were challenging each other to have that complex text and the reading that they would have in all areas. And it was, it was great to see that staff, when we were talking about this, the instructional strategies that they were using, that they were sharing out with one another during our different times that we had during our Wednesdays. What we did is the fall periodic test. This is the first time that we tried this. And we were hoping that we would get the results sooner than we did. It was almost three and a half weeks before we got the results back. When we got the results back, great information, but it was very detailed and very time-intensive to get the information out that we found very valuable. So we utilized the library readers, specialists, MTSS coaches to support the teachers. We went to four instructional reading articles, two per semester. When staff shared their articles, they focused key ideas in detail. So that pretty much everyone, except for our English teachers, did the key ideas and details. Along with craft and structure. Craft and structure was more about sentence structure and developing a paragraph. So there was more detail. We felt that the English department had the expertise to better focus on that. Whereas the rest of the staff, the key ideas and details were more important. They could talk with content specifically. The idea behind it was more, we had a student suite, better readers that they would be comfortable with.
That was a good deal.
Yeah. So part of the strategies to be used were, again, with the MTSS coaches, they came in at multiple P G days to help our staff understand the instructional strategies that would maximize for their specific content area. Our I L T members and MTSS coaches worked to interpret the data, develop the reading license with staff, and modeling instructional strategies for staff. For some of them, we wanted to have different instructional strategies for them, and how did they do it? Well, we had to give them the support, and it was through the I L T and MTSS. And then we shared the strategies within departments.
When did you read the, when did they read the articles? During the home room time, or what?
No, each teacher did it separately. For example, Mrs. Nauck would, if a student missed a class where part of their makeup was, here's the article that you would have. Or they allowed the students to have self-select from a group of like five different articles that she had gone through. So it was part of their class expectations. For, in her area, it was an extension of the classroom, in fact, that she had that outside the class. Whereas Jacob Powder, he would have part of it as the article that he would have for the next unit. So he would almost be pre-loading the information for the students. So that left it to the teacher to select when was the time to infuse the reading within there over and above what they would normally have. So as in addition to.
So Mike, just as I asked John earlier, as an opinion, from your perspective, how would you suggest that we strategize a little bit to raise our proficiency in terms of the reading component? It's at sixty percent still below. No, we don't have the new data yet. But what other strategies are you thinking we could utilize to move that?
Great question. So part of what I would like us to see is we have a tier-two supplemental reading teacher at the high school who is taking some data from the middle school students who are coming over. And we're focusing, okay, how, what group of students using the i-ready information? What are the skill sets that they need and how we build on it? We don't have that, if you will, leading data set at the high school for us to utilize it. So I think that we need to be looking at specific deficits in groups that are coming our way. How do we train as a universal instruction for all teachers? What are the reading strategies that you can implement within your content area? And give them instructional strategies for that. So that's just the universal level. Then the next tier would be utilizing our supplemental coach, if you will, or teacher to really focus in or hone in on those skill deficits those students have. I would encourage, I would ask our MTSS coaches, okay, so what are those other instructional strategies that we can use with all teachers to help improve that reading? Because you're right, if it says sixty percent of below, we have sixty percent of our students who are not at that point. What are we doing to help support all kids to get that level of reading that they need? I'm hoping that our data comes back, even if it's great stuff. We've improved another ten percent out of the below proficient. That's still fifty percent of our students who are struggling at reading. And reading is a fundamental tool they're going to need to be successful beyond their formal walls.
Yes.
More to come.
I think a general question, has the testing changed at all over the years? As far as our students' ability to effectively read, as well as with the complexity data? You know, I look at our numbers, which obviously we would like to see much higher. I compare it to the state numbers. They aren't that different than the state. Sadly.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Or maybe not sadly, I don't know. I guess my question is, and I know we can come up with all sorts of speculation as to why kids aren't reading as much as they used to, or whatever the case may be. Or have these grades always been down here for the state? Or have they changed the testing in some way? Or are there targets as to, is Steve Johnson proficient? Is that way up here, and Steve Johnson, who may read a fair amount, is never going to get there? I'm just struggling with, if the state number is there, and our number is there, what is the number representing? How realistic is it?
Just for a little bit, I know those state of Wisconsin is not as strong in reading as other states. And is it the way we report it out? I don't know that. Fair enough. But when they're doing nationally norm tests, and they're saying this is the college of career readiness that we have for students, I think it's, proves us to do all we can to get that number as high as we can. And I would like, not so much compare us to the state, but as to our scores from the year before, that cohort group as they go through, how are we growing them as students? I don't know the exact answer that you're asking, but you're on the right track of questioning as well, is this a legit score or not? But for me, it's all kids, and how are we helping all kids get that next level?
If you want, you know, take a deep dive into the politics and Common Core standards and that ongoing discussion. Part of, if you look back on Wisconsin's history, when we had the W K C E, which you probably remember, we, as a state, we embraced the W K C E, and it made us look good and feel good about ourselves because that standard was significantly lower than the NAEP standard. So a few years ago, with the introduction of Common Core standards, we started to look at what other states were doing, other very high-performing states like Massachusetts, for example. Their scores are through the roof. And they've had a very high standard in place now for many years. And so now that we have implemented those same, and many other states have implemented those same standards, we've essentially realized that many of the students who, by our old standards, were performing well, by these new standards are not performing nearly as high. So there's some change in the metrics there, Steve. But I think that Mr. Warbowski is right, that, you know, certainly it's something that we can't afford to take our eyes off of even for a second. So as you talk about strategies, I was sitting here thinking about, you know, annotating text, for example. That's something, that's a strategy that all disciplines can teach and employ. And it's something that's going to end up boosting a student's reading ability. And so those are the types of conversations that our MTSS coaches and our Wednesday early release time is spent on in greater detail, so.
The other part of it I would suggest is, you've heard the term collective efficacy, but I covered different principles tonight. And that's really about, yeah, my kid can pass the third grade test, but what level is a third grade test preparing the kid to be successful in fourth grade? Right? And so that collective efficacy, it's not just about getting that kid out of my grade. It's about getting the kid to graduate with options. And how do you have options? Well, I believe in education, obviously, those I would be hearing in terms of, you know, scoring well enough on whatever state assessment that is, and it happens to be ACT for us, that the kids have options, that they're earning scholarship money, that they're getting offers through apprenticeships, or through universities, or through tech schools, or through the armed services, that they have those options. And so I would also suggest, in addition to looking at that number data and comparing us to the state, it'd be great if we could have a better working relationship with those after-high-school activities to say, how are our kids doing? Because if my kid gets into Madison, but within the first semester they fail because they don't have the skills to be successful, then we didn't do a very good job. But that communication back to us hasn't, it's not an easy street for all sorts of reasons. I'd like to see that enhanced, but, you know, that's going to take a lot of time. It's going to take more time and energy than just one district. We're getting better with those. I think the state is getting better with those opportunities and relationships. But to me, that's almost as important, if not more important, than what our data shows. But we also got to keep in mind collectively, you know, getting that kid past that eighth-grade level is good, but how successfully are they going to be in ninth grade? So that's what we've talked and played about with collective efficacy and realizing that. And again, with our early release time on Wednesdays, really honing down that clarity of what it is we want our kids to know and be able to do. And how does that transition between eighth and ninth grade, you know, what was the natural transition times? Both physically, emotionally, socially, mentally, whatever you want to say. That's a tough year. So one of our plans, moving forward, is how do we make sure our eighth and ninth-grade teachers have time to communicate and collaborate to ensure that what we're learning in eighth-grade math pairs a student to be successful in algebra, which is the most common course that most freshmen take? You know, strangely, we haven't had these conversations.
Mark, I'm really glad, and I'm also glad to hear that you're going to use these coaches more. When you get to the high school level, the dynamics in a math class or another class, the reading is still there, but it's a different type of reading. And our teachers need a little more training on that type of reading. I wouldn't pull that out. It's not a matter of using equations anymore. It is pulling the data out of the problem. And I know that very well from teaching statistics, that was hard for those kids. If you look at statistics books, it's all reading. And so it was a long, almost a full quarter to get the kids to be able to read the material itself, to pull that out. So, yeah, even in mathematics, even though my core English teacher over there, I was getting a little cramped, but, yeah, the, sorry for the language, but
I didn't talk too well.
It was, is there, and I see that you got to do it. But my other question was, because I did go in and look at, I was doing an ACT proctoring at the beginning of this year for you. My concern was, how do we deal with those kids that just, at high school level, would just say, I'm not doing this? And they take it, I think it was quite a few, that just said, I'm going to work on the test for five minutes, and I'm done. And they hurt your scores.
Yeah, and that is frustrating because they're not seeing the value in that. And how is it that you can get that intrinsic motivation in those, all students to do that?
Yeah.
There's no one magic pill to do, but I think making sure that it's not a one-time done, you know, one time done, you know, one done mentality, that you're not introducing what the ACT is in terms of importance on February eighteenth, if the kid is going to take the test on February twentieth. No, it should be that natural progression. I go back to your reading problem question too. It should, it should be infused naturally as much as possible, not just, oh, we ought to do this for our SLO, here's our reading, you know what I mean? And that's sort of the example that they gave, I think were great in terms of, yeah, I believe those teachers have worked to integrate that. And it's fifteen minutes or it's twenty minutes out of their lesson, but that's going to pay dividends in terms of, oh, my kid can understand better the key components of what the author is stating in this paragraph or in this, this, this article, for example, you know? And so it's refer, reframing some of our thought processes as educators over how we align some of those things. Because going back to one of the comments with Stephen, your question about what's changed, I think a lot of things that have changed in terms of, it used to be so content focused and, and it's now shifting to more of those skills and critical thinking applications of those knowledge. Because let's face it, I, I can Google a lot of stuff extremely fast that I couldn't five or ten or fifteen or twenty years ago when some of these standards were first rolled out. And now it's how do you filter all those responses and how do you put together your own thoughts out of those responses? And so that's where some of the curricular changes have happened. I mean, common core was sort of on the front end of some of those things, but like, you know, the role of social studies, those standards used to be very content specific, you know, here is this timeframe and that timeframe and so forth. Now they've gone really, you're going to use the content to teach higher level skills and it's really more skill focused and you're going to infuse content that way versus flipping it. So I think that's been a challenge too. I mean, many of our staff, including myself, when you're going to teachers college, it was more about the content than it was about the skills. And so how do we infuse that? And it's hard, it's hard to change too.
Well, just to piggyback on that, for years we spent at the middle school in the early high school years, freshman and sophomore, in the writing component, for instance, to create that five paragraph essay, the introduction, the conclusion, the three in between. And, and as I got them as seniors and I would give students back that, that essay with a poor grade, they, they couldn't understand it. It's got five paragraphs and it's got the introduction, the conclusion, but they didn't say anything. They didn't say anything of interest. They didn't use their own thought patterns really, they just kind of mimicked what needed to be done. And it's, it's like you're referring to, we can get students into certain routines, but somewhere they got to break out of that and think for themselves and not just put down, you know, the.
That's where that student choice comes into play, you know? And I think that's really important too, it's not the end all be all just because you have student choice, but it certainly houses that motivation factor.
Right. Yeah. We, we need to make that leap from knowing the, the formula to, okay, now that you know the formula, now let, let's use it and say something of interest or compute something of interest or.
Or perform or create, absolutely.
Well, and that gets back to what I, I asked you a little bit about in terms of strategies. And this has been something I'm sure the teachers have wrestled with for years, but every department, doesn't matter if it's music, mechanics, home ec, can involve students in reading. Not just, you know, to read the menu, but to read the menu with some emphasis on the importance of learning and/or, or researching it or doing something. I think that has to be, again, kind of collective. You know, it can't just fall on the English department to raise those scores. That's not going to work.
And you know, the other part that I'd like to explore more is, okay, so what are those instructional strategies that we can help infuse into the students and from a, maybe a seven, twelve perspective? Introduce it as seventh graders, reinforce it as eighth grade, now we can reinforce it even more as nine, ten, eleven, so that we don't have to take time to teach the student those instructional strategies. We're only building upon what they already know, so that just even strengthens their skills that they possess.
Don't you think this is going to get easier every year too? And that it's going to piggyback on what's being done in elementary and middle school with all the emphasis on writing and whatever, that, that those skills are, are being taught in an early age? So it's, you know, assimilation by the time they get to high school, this is not new information, this is just.
But it's applying to a different level. I mean, I think it's always going to, you know, increase the complexity of your expectations so that five paragraph becomes six, seven, eight, twelve, five pages of your thoughts and being able to synthesize or analyze or pull in different authors' ideas, you know? And I think that's where having, or writing units of study, often the term referred to as UCACAS, it takes a lot of work, but the, the programmatic planning of that is that evolutionary gradual increase of expectations that, but again, if you only focus in, in your third grade lens, and forget to see how does that, you know, and again, that's where we have to work on our structures to provide that bigger picture lens so teachers can see how that grows and increases as well. So as we become more organized with that sort of stuff, I think we will see great dividends. I don't know if it's going to get easier, but I think we'll see the teachers understand why it's so important to hit, you know, this because that's going to be built upon here and be built upon later on. I don't think we've done a good job in any educational institution in understanding how does that trajectory, that progression really play into things.
Do you find also that colleges now or tech schools or whatever are looking for more well-rounded students as opposed to, you know, that student that's the top of the class, four point oh?
Absolutely. Four point oh doesn't always get you.
I mean, aren't they looking for kids that are doing, you know, community service?
Volunteering.
Volunteering. Do our high school kids, do we still do that service day every April?
We, well.
It was in the fall this last fall.
Oh, it's, it's in the fall. Okay. But we still do it every year, don't we?
The Packer community did?
Last year we didn't because we were transitioning to tie in around homecoming. So it's more a part of something than a stay in alone. So this year they did hang around homecoming, as part of that homecoming activities.
Where they go out into the community and there's projects.
Well, that gets back to our community conversation that we had a year or so ago with our community saying, one of the big emphasis was, everything tonight we listen to in terms of test scores is great, but what about the mental health of our students? The well-rounded emotional and, you know, the environment that we create for them because as we all know, those all add to people's success, right? And, and so we, we have to be very cognizant of that. We can't get too caught up entirely on the numbers game, although that's terribly important because we have to, yeah, we have to balance it out.
I just have one last comment. I'm really jealous that I was not a part of the time when we have these PLCs these Wednesdays because you're right, at the high school, we were trained in college to be departmentalized. You didn't associate with the neighbor, okay? You were your own entity. And now you're doing this and I'm hoping that we're seeing more and more departments integrating also during that time. That time is so important.
I agree. Very valuable.
We never had time to talk to each other.
Okay, just to, just real quick, I told you to retire too early, but at the start of the school year, you know, we struggled with that professional development. And when it came to those snow days and you had to lose them, staff was very upset and they're like, they got used to that time and really realizing it. So I look forward to it coming back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
A lot of great successes. We still have our work cut out for us. Here's my question, and thank you for what all you are doing and the people that are here working with that are here, very much appreciated. And we keep moving forward. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I would approve all, and I, I do want to point out that in the treasures report, page two now has a budget versus actual and remaining balance or fund and expenses. And at some point, I hope we get income also, but thank you for.
But we still would like that pulled out in, you know, on a, on a sheet like this.
It is on a sheet.
Yep.
There's, there's a motion on the consent agenda. We can have discussion if we wish, is there a second?
Uh, second.
Motion and second, thank you. Is there a discussion?
Well, I, I'm only, I just. Yeah, I, I didn't look.
Pursuant to the motion.
Yeah, pursuant to the motion. As, as pursuant to the comment, I, I generally, because it's on a consent agenda, I didn't look through it all because I don't always do that. But now that you've mentioned that.
That's why I mentioned.
Yeah, good, thank you.
There's a motion and a second, is there other discussion, Mr. Hackett?
I would like to know about the field trips. One going FFA on October twenty-eighth to the thirtieth in two thousand and twenty, it probably should be two thousand and nineteen. And the other one was a forensics, should be.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, yeah, okay.
It's actually coming out.
Okay. I, I, as long as those two changes are made, then that's what it should be.
Okay, there's a motion amended to reflect those changes.
I was hoping Aaron was here tonight, only because I was just going to ask, I know he's got all the hiring for the coaches and whatnot, but I was just curious as to how he stood on his overall, if he was pretty well filled with, I mean, it looks like it, but I don't know, Mike, if you've had a chance, are we pretty well set for all of our coaching slots?
I think we have two recent openings, but other than that, we're set.
Aaron may be in the journey of summer basketball.
I know they have.
There is a motion, is it amended as called for by Mr. Hackett on the correction of dates? Does the second agree with that, stand with that amendment to the motion?
That was you, Betty.
I'm sorry.
Does the second to the motion stand with the amendment to adjust those dates?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Panther?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Mark Olbisky?
Aye.
Danny Robinson?
Yes.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Dale Bell?
Aye.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. That all entertain a motion?
Motion to a draft.
Motion to a draft is our second. Thank you everyone, appreciate you back.